I now call the order of the business of January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Clerk, will you please take your role?
Nedapigian?
Present.
Kenneth Baron?
Here.
Thomas Berry?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Margaret Horvath?
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Being our first meeting of the year, I'd like to ask the mayor to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is number three, the agenda approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pigian?
I move to adopt the agenda for today's council meeting, January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, approval of the minutes, four A, the minutes of regular meeting of December ninth, two thousand and fourteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes from December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, for Dearborn Heights City Council as submitted.
Support.
Second by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry?
Move to approve current claims six, one through sixty-four, but am I correct in saying that there was?
Six, seven.
Six, seven.
The amount should be four thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety cents.
So move.
Six, twenty-five should go from the police to the water budget is where the amount is taken out.
So move.
Second. Okay, second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Do you have any questions? I have a...
Yeah, I already said that.
I forgot.
Councilman Pigian, go ahead.
We're demolishing a building for six thousand, five hundred dollars on Berkshire number eight. What's the, what's the item?
Okay, that was the garage?
What's the item number?
Yeah, right, right, right.
That is six, eight. Yeah, what that is, that was a very large building, at least a four-car garage, very old building from what I got from Jack. It was a building that had a drain system in it years ago, apparently they just had these and if they changed oil, they just threw it in there, all kinds of stuff like that. So it was, it was a lot more involved. I mean, I questioned that, do looking at, I'll tear, you know, a twenty-four by twenty-four garage down by hand for...
Ten thousand, ten thousand dollars, you could tear down a major building and you could build a garage.
Oh, it wasn't ten thousand.
Sixty-five hundred.
It was only sixty-five hundred.
No, I'm saying, a garage is sixty... I said, I gotta see this garage, but...
Well, you can't see it now.
Yeah, I can't see it now. Might have a picture of the pre...
Yeah, we probably have a picture near Cox. Anything else?
Yeah, I, on item thirty, under Nagel Construction, where we're... Nowhere could I find in his paperwork the twenty-six thousand dollars. I could see on our paperwork, there was an amount of twenty-six, but you couldn't verify it anywhere that I see in Nagel's. So I was wondering, that was kind of strange to me. The rest of you don't think it's strange, it's okay by me. Did you get the num... Did I give you the number right?
Mr. Chair.
So I see an invoice, thirty-five, seventeen, for a total of twenty-six thousand, four
hundred, sixty-five dollars and thirty cents, and that's what's on the claim.
Right.
So where do we not?
Anywhere else in that paperwork, there's no such number.
In the description of the repair? It's on the invoice.
I, I know, I s... Okay.
Well, it's an invoice, where else do you want it to be? Come on, tell us, where else do you want it to be? It's an invoice.
I mean, it gives you a quantity and a description of everything they did summed up in the invoice.
Right, I saw it there, right. I was hoping to see it handwritten over there, adding up all those totals.
Well, this looks like it's...
Get out of here.
This looks like it's pretty cryptic, I, I don't quite understand it, so...
Well, that's...
That's my, those are, that's my favorite company.
If that's, you wanna try to add all those up, it'd be a nightmare, that's what I was doing, anyway.
But there is no amount on the actual description, is there?
No, that's footage. Yeah. Lineal feet and size of it.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's no dollar amount.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I know we've already made the motion and taken the vote on this, but can we, maybe we go back to six, twenty-five real quick, just because that was a last-minute change?
Oh.
Would that be okay with the council body to do so, as well as the chair?
Go ahead.
For six, twenty-five, this is submitted by the Police Department for Maintenance on a vehicle, looks like a two thousand GMC twenty-five hundred, and I'm wondering, because we did make a last-minute change, instead of general fund, we took it out of water fund, and I do apologize, I would normally ask you and call you, but since it was such a last-minute, can you tell me and justify that change for us, please?
It's not the police department, it's the water.
No, it should, okay, okay, so...
So if you look at the invoice...
All right, because on the front, it says it comes from...
It's not a police vehicle.
It's not a police vehicle.
Yeah, we don't have any...
That was my question, what vehicle was it?
Twenty-five hundred pickup is, it's more, that's, you wouldn't use as...
It's a heavy-duty pickup.
Yeah.
So heavy-duty pickup, which would explain why it was used for water.
Fire department has one.
And probably a water line break, sewer line break. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman, on the invoice itself, Matt's Auto did note that it was the DPW.
Oh, I see, yes, they did.
And with control.
And with control, oh.
Not to be wrong.
No?
No, it is what the small council...
Yeah, twenty-five hundred.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Next time I'll pause a little bit longer.
Please, give me a second, thank you.
Okay.
It was that ninety cents that did it.
Yeah, we'll get to ninety cents, we'll get to that.
Okay, number seven, considerations of bids, seven A, tabulation of bids, personal escape system, fire chief Brogan.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski?
I move, council concur with fire chief Brogan regarding the request to accept a bid for the RTI and, that's the personal escape systems, and return the bid deposits to the unsuccessful vendors. The Dearborn Heights net cost for this purchase is eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents coming out of capital all-in.
Second.
Correction on that.
Approve payment upon...
Yes, approve of payment upon receipt of the equipment and all of this according to the backup in the document signed by chief Brogan.
Seven A?
In seven A.
And that'll correct the amount, you said.
Okay.
Should be eighteen seventy-four, twenty-five.
Correct the amount.
Yep, okay.
Second.
Second. Second by Councilman Pigian, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
I hate to put you on the spot, Deputy Chief.
You come to the mic.
Because I talked to Brogan, I talked to chief Brogan because I wanted to know what this pretzel was, I mean, petzel, the system, and he explained it to me, and I thought it was very interesting, so could you explain to the public what this is?
Sure, it's a personal escape system for every firefighter. The ones that we selected for our firefighters is essentially a belt, which is considered a class-one harness, and a belay-type system that attaches to that harness, so in the event that we're in a second-story window and we need to escape in a, in a hurry, we can anchor ourselves to the other end, which is a hook, and then bail out the window. There's enough, in this, in this case, we're getting into one with not the rope, but the webbing, fifty feet of webbing, Kevlar reinforced, so, so we can safely descend rather than jump out.
Great, okay, I just, I just want everybody to know that, getting ziplining.
I'm glad you brought that up because I think it was last fall, either on Powers or Hanover, but, you know, since we don't have a ladder truck and the way that they fight the fires, and they, we had three or four firefighters on top of the roof, and then there was a quick command officer decision, like, everybody get off that roof really quick, and that roof collapsed, I would say, no more than three to five minutes after all the firefighters were off, and it, the risk that these guys take on our behalf is just unbelievable, but we need to have that system to make sure we don't ever have a casualty.
The amount is minuscule compared to...
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nine, report from city official, nine A, from police chief Gavin, agreement with DSS Corporation for taping of the police telephone lines.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pigian?
I move to approve police chief Lee Gavin's request for approval to enter into an agreement with DSS Corporation. DSS Corporation Company provides service and equipment for taping of police phone lines. This cost is six thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the first year, five thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars for the five-year period, and billed annually and will be taken from the police department's contractual service account as illustrated in nine A.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nine B, from police chief Gavin, annual software maintenance and support agreement for evidence and property checking.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve chief of police Lee Gavin's request for payment to file on Q in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-two cents for annual software maintenance and support. This amount reflects a five percent discount, well, we missed that, I'm sorry, so the full amount is actually six thousand, six hundred and three dollars and fifty cents as outlined in nine B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
I, I think we took advantage of the five percent.
We did.
Because it says in here, they paid it because of that.
Right.
So it was paid before December thirty-first?
That's correct.
Is that correct? So that would be the first amount, at six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-two cents as outlined in nine B, because that was the discounted amount of five percent.
We had the support, right, yes. Any further discussion? Lee, you had something, just a...
I was just gonna say, this is a program for the evidence room, keep an inventory. Hopefully, this is the last year with this, the Clemis system, and you see that bill that comes in, that's our computer system through Oakland County, and they have a new program for the inventory, so hopefully, this is the last year, we'll be able to use their system, which we already pay for after this.
Okay, thanks. Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nine C, from police chief Gavin, in-car camera system, one-year extended maintenance agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski?
I move, council concur with chief Gavin's request for the payment to L3 Communications for a one-year extended maintenance agreement. The, the outlay is in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and two dollars, and it will be taken from the police department contractual services account for the details of items nine C.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry?
Chief Gavin, I'm sure with the recent incidences we've had regarding the police shootings and all the talk about body cameras, have you sat to discuss it with anybody regarding body cameras for our department? Do you see a need for it? Is it something that, there's a grant out there for that we can look into?
See, we're gonna, down the line, look into it. Right now, we have the audio cameras in the cars, the officers are working, the microphones, sure, they don't have the cameras yet, just our contention is, you know, the government's looking present of maybe making that mandatory. The only problem is, once you get those, we all know through electronics, stuff is changing so rapidly, after maybe a year or so, that stuff's gonna be outdated, and the question is gonna be, who's gonna have to pick that up? So we're waiting to kind of see which way the government goes with it.
Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nine D, from police chief Gavin, purchase of new DVR and camera systems.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski?
I move, council concur with chief Gavin regarding the request, request to purchase six new DVR camera systems for the forthcoming new Explorers. The purchase to occur from L3 Mobile Vision Incorporated, total cost of the expenditure is seventeen thousand, seventy-six dollars and forty-two cents, all per the documentation under item nine D.
Second.
Second by Councilman Pigian, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry?
Installation of those, is that a separate cost? I will have to check, Mr. Councilman. I think it is, we take the cars down to Winters, we have the equipment, it's all included in the installation price when you modify a car. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nine E, from police chief Gavin, purchase of laptop computer.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Constant?
I move, we concur with police chief Gavin and approve the purchase of one laptop computer from Dell for the drug enforcement officer as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Be paid for with forfeiture funds.
Yes.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion?
We ought to indicate the amount, twenty-one hundred...
No, once you say as outlined in nine E, it covers everything.
Two thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Yes, it's already second.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, any further discussion?
Chief? No, I was just gonna have you get up again.
Well, we know that the chief's been busy over the last few weeks. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirteen, new business, thirteen A, business license renewal for Warren Valley Golf and Banquet Center, two-six-one-one-six Warren.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pigian?
I move to approve the business license for the Warren Valley Golf and Banquet Center located at twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixteen Warren Avenue for the current year, beginning on February twenty-eighth, for a fee of two hundred dollars as illustrated in thirteen A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
To look at it.
Motion carried. This ends our regular portion of the meeting. Before I ask the council, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy new year, a healthy, happy, and a prosperous new year. Is there anything to come from any of the council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes, I just wanted to share with everyone, in support of increased communication opportunities for the residents of Dearborn Heights, I have, as a council member, begun a weekly e-letter communication that's been going out to our residents since November. It's being well-received, but I want to make sure everyone's aware that it is available, and again, through email, it has updates on events, community events, happenings, city news, again, it's unofficial, not a city-issued e-letter, but from a council member communicating with our residents. If you're interested, you can call me or you can email me. My email address is Hicks, H-I-C-K-S, Clayton, C-L-A-Y-T-O-N, the number four, DHcitycouncil@Yahoo.com. Let me know, we'll be happy to add you to our recipient list. Thank you.
Sign me up.
I can do that.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Pigian?
Those of you who might have missed it, Meet the Press, our dear Ron Ammon was on Meet the Press this week, along with Kasim Ali from the mosque on Ford Road. I was, needless to say, very surprised. So everybody tune in, if you taped it, get to see Ron Ammon again.
Surprised at what?
Excuse me?
Surprised at what?
Impressed.
Or impressed.
Impressed.
Yes.
Impressed.
Surprised, impressed, the whole ball of X.
All right. Anything else for the council?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Constant?
Today, we heard the address of the mayor of Dearborn Heights, our mayor Dan Plutko, and also the mayor of Dearborn, two thousand and fifteen, a lot of challenges for the city, including improving our roads, getting our share of funding from the state, and so we'll be working with the mayor's office and with the city of Dearborn, with our state legislators to make sure that Dearborn Heights gets their fair share of funding.
Anything else? Mayor, do you have anything?
I was just gonna indicate, I was honored to be invited to the greater Dearborn, Dearborn Heights area Chamber of Commerce in presenting the Tale of Two Cities, and hopefully, we come across, both myself and my counterpart in Dearborn get along very well, and we're good friends, and hopefully, that got conveyed to everybody.
Good.
He was also very passionate about this voting proposal coming up in May, to say the least. He didn't like it?
No, not while they're trying to fix it.
Yeah.
He didn't get it.
Anything? Okay, okay, at this point, if anyone has announcements, things happening, coming up in the city, please come up to the podium, Mike, it's always good to hear from you.
Hello, council chair and mayor, just wanted to mention a couple of upcoming programs. First off, this Thursday, the fifteenth, at Carolyn Candy Library at seven PM, we will be doing an ancestry class. Expert searcher Kimberly Bastian will teach you how to efficiently search and bring to light your family's past, so if you have interest in that, stop on by. Our next Wednesday, January twenty-first, from seven to eight-thirty at Carolyn Candy Library, we will be having an introduction to the ebook, learn how to download books to your mobile devices through Overdrive, the library's ebook system. Please register at the circulation desk by calling three-one-three, seven-nine-one, thirty-eight-hundred. And finally, Thursday, February fifth, at seven PM at Carolyn Candy Library, we will be holding a crime prevention seminar. Join crime prevention officer Mark Peronello and detective sergeant Mike Petrie of the Dearborn Heights Police Department as they appraise you of current scams to defraud customers. So that is all for now, thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else have any announcements?
She's new web.
Thank you very much, Chairman Baron and mayor and council for allowing me to be here today, you did an outstanding job today, mayor, at the Tale of Two Cities, and I think it was certainly conveyed that the two of you worked together very well.
Thank you.
Yes, most interesting, lots of progress, which was encouraging. Okay, I'm here to give you an update on a couple of questions I received from both council members and residents regarding schedules of meetings and what's happening with different groups that meet, that impact the Ecourse Creek, and the watershed and all of that stuff. So the two major organizations that I was getting meetings, that I was being asked about, was the Downriver Sewage System Joint Management Board, which is now going to be referred to as the JMC, the Joint Management Committee. There is no two thousand and fifteen schedule for this group, okay, and I'll tell you the reason that there isn't, if you don't already know and you haven't already heard it from other sources, I'm gonna tell you again, because they were operating under a fifty-year agreement, which just amazes me that they ever had fifty-year agreements in government, can you believe that, since nineteen sixty-two? Like, a million things aren't gonna change in fifty years, but anyway, so it expired in two thousand and twelve, and it has taken two years to negotiate the new agreement. So now, well, it's between the counties and the thirteen municipalities that are involved, okay? So now, they got one that, that most of them are happy with, but they have to get all of the mayors and councils in those thirteen communities to approve the new agreement. So once that is approved, then they will form the new Joint Management Committee, which will consist of nine members, seven that are represent, representatives of the municipalities, and correct me if I'm wrong, mayor.
It's four members from the communities, four appointments by the county executive, and then one would be a Wayne County Commissioner, whose district includes the thirteen communities.
Yeah, Taylor. It's gonna be Taylor, because it's the biggest one, and that'll be Ray Basham, and he's still that. Now, see, it's interesting, because I'm gonna have to get, I'm gonna have to get confirmation, and I know you know, because you're on the inside of the agreement, so I'm sure what you're saying is right, but it, it makes me wonder why they told me it was, it was different, but anyway.
Well, when we met, meet, I'll give you a copy of the agreement.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure you're right, because you were on the inside of the negotiation, you negotiated it.
We nego, and the negotiations took five years to, we started three years early, and we're gonna have a meeting in early, late January, I think early February, and we'll have it presented to the council.
Wonderful, and I know that you even came down to the, to county commission and negotiated it with the appropriate committee, and I tell you, you left a great impression, and, and all of the commissioners that were involved in that, negotiations and your explanation of everything you made, you put the commission on board, so we're supportive of it, you know, and we appreciate your role in it. So it's just gonna be a matter of getting all the other committees, communities on board, but, so, so you know how far off a schedule is? I mean, we don't even have a board yet, we don't have appointees yet, see, the way, the way I was told, and maybe it was, he confused it with the way it was, because he said, you know, I was talking to Ken, and he was pulling out documentations, and he was searching on the phone while I'm asking him off these pointed questions on the phone, and he said, I think it's seven representation, seven representatives from the committee, one from the commission, and one from the CEO, and I said, you know, are you sure that's not the way it is, and it isn't changing in the new agreement? And he said, no, I'm not really sure, you know, Pulekka would know that better than I do.
Four, four, and one.
Four, four, and one, okay, and I'm sure ours, well, I, I can't imagine it changing from Basham, because Bash, Taylor is one of the biggest communities.
Yeah.
So it'll probably stay him, but, and, and he probably already told you all of this, but I just want you to know that I, I went back to our people, and they said, that's why there's no schedule, and then when they do have a schedule, just so you have another, you checked another source for the people who want to know, when they do have a schedule, they do it based on how many agenda items they have. So they don't have meetings just to have meetings, they don't have regularly scheduled meetings, they call meetings when the items warrant having a meeting. So they have about three to four of them a year. The, the one thing I did get out of them is they will give me advance notice of when they are going to have them, and I can get them to you. Okay, so that I can do, so that the way they can be given to the people, okay? The other, the other group is the EPED group, and that is, stands for the Ecourse Creek Pollution Abatement District Meetings, which is also a group that meets on an ad hoc basis. They do not have a two thousand and fifteen schedule in place. As you can imagine, we're under a new CEO, and we haven't had a new CEO in quite some time, and with all that's gone on in the county over the last couple of years, he is doing a complete audit of the entire county, and he is getting rid of people, and he's bringing new people in, and everything is shuffled around so much that I don't even have committee assignments. I mean, usually, by this time, I get sworn in on the eighth, I know exactly what committees I'm working on, I have no clue. So we have no agenda items, we were supposed to have committees this week, we don't have any committees this week, because we don't have any agenda items, because we don't even know who the directors are and the appointees are in different departments. Appointments are being made, but it's an enormous undertaking, you know, and he has been working on it very, very hard, and he's got great people at work, I'm very impressed with the people he's named so far, and, you know, but there's so many changes going on right now, that until, you know, we, for every term for the last, what, ten years, twelve years, it's been business as usual with the same administration and the same people, so it never needed all this time for, for them to get their act together and get things So it never needed all this time for, for them to get their act together and get things moving, but it's total change now. So it's going to take a little bit of time to get all that together. So there are, there's nothing really moving. Everybody's on, I mean outwardly. Everything's moving like crazy on the inside of the county, as you can imagine, it's almost chaos. But, um, or it's sorting out the chaos, I think, making sense of it. But, um, and I really respect the fact that he's taken the time to do this. He actually came to our swearing-in ceremony, Warren Evans did, and I've never seen a CEO at our swearing-in ceremony, and he was at our swearing-in ceremony. He's already met with, he's asked to meet with every member of the commission, um, once before he came in, and I'm meeting with him again on the twenty-second. So I have a folder on the Ecourse Creek about this thick. So I will be talking with him. The mayor has reached out to him, the mayor has sent him a packet. Um, and so I want to, I want to segue into that discussion as well. I called the department, we haven't got an answer from the federal government regarding the status of the peer review, other than it's still in progress. They don't have an out, they didn't have a solution yet. They don't know if it's approved or it's not, improve it's still underway. So everybody knows how the federal government works, and there isn't a whole lot we can do about it. We're lobbying hard. We did hear one bit of good news that the, um, that the president had allotted additional monies into the Clean Water Act, projects to be funded by the Clean Water Act. This would be one of those projects. We already have a study by their own, the Army Corps. So it's in a pretty good position for that funding. Of course, we'll be competing with projects similar to this all over the country, but our lobbyists, Patton Boggs up in Washington, feel that we have a pretty good case to make, especially with the most recent declaration of, of local federal, uh, emergencies. So, um, it's awful that really bad things have to happen to motivate the federal government, but sometimes that's, that's what it takes. So we've been in a better position to get funding from them than we ever have been before, but is that a guarantee, or is that something within any, any of our control? Unfortunately, it's not. So pray at it, that's all I can say. Um, so I'm hopeful, but I will keep you abreast of it, as more I learn, you'll know. Soon as I know, you'll know. And, um, that's where we are currently with that, you know? And the reason that we're, we're hanging on for that is because if the Army Corps' project gets approved by the federal government, they'll pick up sixty-five percent of it. And then we only have to do an assessment of thirty-five percent, and we can spread it across, you know, all the communities that, that are involved. And it'll be a lot less of a tax burden on the, on the residents. And so that's why we're hopeful, and that's what we've been trying to do. But if they just shoot it out of the sky and say, it's not going to happen, then, then you'll have decisions to make on how you want to move forward, you know? And, but the one thing that, that I can tell you is that we knew where the county stood in, in trying to get information. And I've been getting emails, and for a long time, I was getting emails from the people who are studying and researching the creek, and I could get them answers. And then I got, then I got an answer back that said, you know, from our court counsel that said, we're no longer answering these questions. It's just become a work product, it takes too much time, it takes too much labor. If they want more information, then they can file a FOIA. I was not really, I understand where they're coming from, that we don't have resources, people just sitting on their hands, they can do tons of documentation, research, extensive research, doing nothing, they're busier than heck. But, but I do believe people have a right to know. So I asked them to do an educational forum. I've been after them forever, even if it was televised, okay? And they refused to do so. So that's why they were getting the questions. So alls I can say is I disagree with their position on that. I do think that these items should have been, I think they should have been forthcoming with the information, um, in whatever medium they chose. I mean, I, nobody wants to go in front of a lynch mob, and, and that's, I think frankly, that they felt that that's what was going to happen if they were to come out. But if they were to be able to, um, go on a televised situation where, you know, they answered, we got questions from the people and, and we answered them, um, I think that that's something that they should have afforded the people. So as the representative of this community, I want to let you know that I supported that, and I fought for that. And through our legal department, I was told that that's not going to happen. But that was under the former administration. It's a new day. Those people are all gone. We have a whole new administration. So, um, I don't know that they'll have that same opinion, or if they'll be willing to sit down at the table. The department believes, and I've talked to the leadership of the department, they believe it's everybody's best interest to work together, and I agree with them. So it affects us all, every one of us, you know? Affects the county just as much as it affects the locals, and, um, I think we'll get a lot further ahead if we work together. I also ran into an old friend of mine, I am a former lobbyist for the telephone company many years ago, and I used to work in Lansing when Congressman Peters was a state senator. And so we're old friends, so I got reacquainted with him. I ran into him at, um, at the building trades breakfast, and I had him for three minutes while we got food. And you know what we talked about? We talked about Ecourse Creek. And I told him, you know, Congressman, I need to sit down with you. And he said, Diane, I'm living in a trailer right now. So as soon as I get my office together, you know, we'll meet and we'll talk about it. Because he took Carl Levin's place, and Carl Levin got us thirty-six million, and then came back and got us another two million. All of the funding that we've gotten for the research on this project has been through that seat, and we don't want to lose that. And I think he'll be a great champion for us, and I, I told, and I talked to the mayor about it, and he said he would love to sit down with him as well. Um, I also have, and so does your mayor, have an excellent friend in Debbie Dingell. And, um, so I know that she is open as well to discuss and to fight our fight, um, in Washington. So some of these changes in, in this last election, I think, give us some hope, um, you know, that we will have allies, uh, fighting with us and for us where it counts. So I wish I could give you all definitive answers on where everything's going to go from here, but everything's up in the air. So I just want to give you, let you know that it's all up in the air, but at least that there's hope, and at least all the people who shut the doors in our faces aren't there anymore, and, and there's new ears for us to get to. And we're already working on it, both the mayor and I. And if any of you have any feedback or input or anything you would like me to look into on this matter or any other matter, you know, I know you, you have my number, because you use it. And anytime, please feel free to do so. And if anybody has any other questions for me, I'm.
If I, if I just might, Commissioner, kudos to you and thank you on behalf of the residents. Making that connection to Senator Peters, I think is going to be very critical, and thank you so much for getting, cornering him in the buffet line.
Right. I know, I was so opportunistic. I was shameless, but thank you. Anytime you can get there, you got to get it.
Yep.
You're very welcome, Mayor. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Council chair.
You said the Downriver operation is in a joint management commission?
Committee.
It's, it's called the Joint, JMC, Joint Management Committee, but it, it was a group that formed when Judge Fikens mandated, and it was never a, a legal entity. So it was, once the court case disappeared, the county, uh, agreed to continue the JMC, get input from the thirteen communities, but at any point in time could have just said, you're not going to meet. In the new agreement, we now have it come under a state act, and it's established legally and cannot be disposed of. And so there's a requirement, and we'll go in all the details, but yeah, it's name changes because it now comes under a public act, but it doesn't go into effect. The county has already approved it, the commission approved it at their last meeting in December. The thirteen communities all have to approve this, uh, agreement before it goes into effect.
There are thirteen communities.
Thirteen.
And only four of those communities filter into representation. They're four members. How does that get determined as to what communities? Which of the four are part of that operation?
That is something that we have to go back as communities and decide. And I have a meeting coming up that Taylor's agreed to host, and, uh, we're going to talk, the mayors, the supervisors, the city managers for those thirteen communities, uh, we're getting all together, we're going to present this to them, and that will most, they've all got to be on board to pass this. And so I expect to be going to some, uh, city meetings and township meetings to help explain this, and, uh, but, but we don't know exactly how we're going to fill the four spots. Um, and, we'll wait and see. I can't answer that at this moment.
Yeah, it's still in its infant stages, but I know that the agreement is, does offer a lot more protections for the municipalities involved, so.
And the other thing it does, that was not in the early agreement, it provides a mechanism in regards to the amount of flows that go into the system, and also calls for enforcement, because the old sixty-two agreement, no one really thought that there'd be any time of problem in the amount of flows to the plant. This now says that within two years, the flows will all have to be monitored and determination made, that you can't put excess flow, or, or how we're going to handle that, and gives enforcement, uh, processes. The other thing is the thirteen communities now will also have a liaison, a person who will work on a part-time basis with Ken and his group, and so there's going to be direct input, which now we don't really receive. We're kind of at the response of, uh, sometimes we get the information, sometimes we don't. So it's, it's a significant movement, uh, from what, where we were to where we've gotten to, and quite frankly, I didn't think we'd ever get there.
And kudos to you, because I, I know you're instrumental in it, and I know it, you know, it's probably because you've lived through all of the repercussions that, that, all of the, the devastation that that river has caused, that, that you have, are so astute on all the different protections that, that have to be put into place. I mean, you know, you've lived it.
Well, I think, we didn't get everything we wanted, because the one, the one thing we didn't get in, we wanted, uh, responsibility from the county, certain kinds of measurables, and they resisted that. And I understand why they did, and we would have never gotten agreement, but, um, we got a lot of protections in there, and for rates and other things, it takes a supermajority. So basically, there's going to have, be a good working agreement between the communities and the county, and I think that will work out.
I, yeah, I think, I think it's a good, I think it's a good move in the right direction, you know? I, I really do. It's just, it's so hard to ask, answer pointed questions about things that aren't formed yet, and that's why, you know, they're just still a work in progress. But at least, uh, at least the documentation that's been laid down is better than what we were operating under in the past, and we've learned from our experiences what needs to go in there, and, you know? So I think that's, that's a good step in the right direction, and I think that you were pivotal to that, because like I said, I, I think that this city has to, had to live through so many issues that you've learned firsthand, so who better to negotiate that than you? So thank you for your work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to apologize to Gary. I take back everything I ever said about how long it takes you. If it took them five years, you won't even compare to your decision making.
From what Commissioner Webb said, it's going to take, uh, a full four-year term to get the breakfast table set.
Probably.
It's mind-boggling as to what needs to be done with, uh, with all the foot dragging that had taken place in the county level before.
I don't have any.
Anyone else have any announcements? See none, then at this point, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please direct them to me. You will have, you would like to talk, if you would like to talk to another council member, the mayor, department head, et cetera, let me know, and I will ask him or her if they would like to respond. Councilman Berry will keep time. You will have three minutes after you give your name, street, and the city you reside in. When you have fifteen seconds left, he will hold up this sign so that you can wrap up your discussion. At the three-minute point, he will hold up the stop sign when you are finished. Anyone else have any announcements, things you want to bring on the podium?
Ray Muscat, Havelock Street. Happy New Year to everybody. I hope everybody had a safe and a happy holiday season. I want to thank Commissioner Webb for the information she just passed out. Good food for thought. Even though I, I look at this, uh, last page here, where I see, uh, Wayne County Department of Environment, it sues disposal three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and, uh, another one here for sewage for twenty-six thousand. I got some of that sewage back, I'd like to get a refund on some of that money, okay? Uh, and that's really a kind of a joke, but it's not, and I'm sure there's a whole lot of people who feel the same way I do. But this problem is a lot bigger than anyone in this room, uh, or even in the county. I think it's way up in Washington that has to be taken care of. I don't think this is going to be done without Washington's help, unfortunately for our side. But anyway, uh, you know, over the years that I've been coming here, there's been talk about ordinance officers working different shifts, okay? It's time we implement that right away. I've been speaking with, uh, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, uh, about trash bags that are full of leaves that are still prevalent around our city, still sitting out there. I know the ordinance officer was out in my neighborhood looking at a bunch of stuff. I, I saw a bunch more today. Uh, the garbage can situation that you guys worked on hard about getting them off the street after garbage collection, they're all over the place, uh, two, three days after garbage pickup. We need to find some way of getting cars off the street the day of garbage pickup. Other communities have this, they enforce it hard, they really enforce it. Allen Park is just notorious. You don't dare even sit in your car parked on a side street when it's, it's garbage day. They'll give you a ticket, they don't care. You're stopped on the street, you're getting a ticket. But you can't even get down our streets to as many cars as people have. They've got driveways that are empty, some homes have four, five, six cars, okay? You can't get down the streets. God forbid, if there's an emergency and we got, have a fire truck, some streets you can't get through. Uh, I, I saw the snowplow coming by today, thank God. We've had two snowfalls since they've come by, so we've had more than two or three inches of snow on the ground. I, I think ordinance has to be revisited about the amount of snow for a snow emergency. Cars need to be off the street. Our streets are a mess, but it's not DPW's fault when they plow. I mean, you can only plow where there's no cars. You got to do something. You guys have got, this is something that needs to be done. Ordinance officers have to work weekends, trees are being cut down on, at five o'clock, even now in the wintertime. Trees are being cut, city trees being cut down. So, you know, I.
Take that in consideration when we.
I assure, you know, you, we've talked about it now, not for weeks or months, we've been talking about this for years. It's time to implement this. We've hired enough guys.
But it's, it's together, Ray, trust me, I really feel.
You know, we've, we've said this for years. I, I'm just, we, we say what you guys have told us, we're working on, we're, well, it's time to do it. Please, okay? Cars need to get off the street, especially on garbage days.
Thank you.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, thank you, Commissioner Webb. I appreciate all the hard work you've done for you, and I agree that our drain commissioner should not have to go before a lynch squad, but at the same time, asking one question as to where a particular creek or drain is, is not putting him at any harm. Okay, so I have a couple, a few questions. When will the flood claims be paid? Is there any?
We don't have that attorney here.
The chairman and I talked about the fact that, um, he gave me two dates to try to get ahold of the attorneys and the insurance people, and so there's going to be a big meeting. That portion of meeting will probably be closed, but, uh, they'll, they'll make a presentation and a determination. I have not been told, uh, a current status.
That's correct.
Um, has the council worked any more on the Water Fund Oversight Committee? That was discussed.
Water Fund Oversight Committee.
Yeah, Councilman Berry, you talked about that to Troy Brown, about forming a committee?
Yeah, go ahead.
It wasn't, uh, a Water Fund Oversight Committee. It was the possibility of forming a committee, um, to oversee the Ecourse Creek issue, it wasn't the Water Fund Committee.
Okay, well, I guess Troy Brown feels that it should, the water, meaning either the clean water or the nasty water that affects Dearborn Heights, but, um, maybe that's something you can talk with him about. Um, the flood study session, council study session, has that been?
That's kind of all incorporated with.
So no date yet, no time?
Um, I, I would probably be pretty close, good to saying it's going to be February, but I.
Yeah, you, uh, you know, nothing's been concrete so that we can put everyone together, I guess. The chairman, and we agreed to do all the legwork, so I was given two dates in February. We're trying to get all, all the people and coordinate it, and it's going to be like one long.
It'll be a long night.
Long night session, but we agreed that, well, it was fresh in everybody's mind. And, and we, I would propose that, except for the portion dealing with the claims, which should be closed, um, I certainly would favor that any resident that wishes to attend the rest of the meetings, even though some of them would be possibly closed, I think your interest is the same as the city's interest, and I would certainly have to tell the chairman, invite any resident wishes to attend, invite them to the meeting so you can hear firsthand.
Okay, so you'll contact us regarding when this meeting will be?
It'll be, it'll be posted. Um, and if, if it's, if we have the exact date, like at the next council meeting, two weeks from tonight, then I.
Oh, okay. Well, you could give it to Councilman Hicks Clayton, she could put it in her email newsletter, because I know a lot of people are reading that newsletter. Okay, I just want to know, is the Taylor Basin functioning one hundred percent because we're, on this budget, on this, uh, claims, we just paid forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars to the EC.
EC. Um, Mr. Brooks, do you know if that thing's?
I don't know.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
We'll see if we can get that, maybe, Dan, if you might.
Okay. Um, just on the, uh, items, what's the difference between forty-eight, forty-four thousand for the Ecourse Creek and fifty, no, is that it? Forty-nine, no, I'm sorry, it's forty-nine. Forty-nine, no, I'm sorry, it's forty-nine, twenty-six thousand for sewage, and then on fifty, it's sewage disposal.
Which claims are those?
Uh, forty-nine and fifty. What's the difference between those two? I mean, sewage is sewage.
Well, sewage disposal, that's getting...
Do we pay that on a, a monthly basis? Is that paid on a monthly basis?
Forty-nine is the Down River, and that is monthly?
The three hundred and twenty-seven?
How about twenty-six, one eighty-nine?
Oh, okay, that's monthly? That's what we pay for our sewage, right?
For the Down River system.
Okay, monthly Down River. Okay, so what is the...
What is the other one?
The fifty.
Fifty.
Sewage disposal.
Yeah, that, that's for the Rouge Valley system.
We're in, a, a part of Dearborn Heights is in the Rouge Valley, or all of Dearborn Heights is.
No.
No?
The, the E-Course Creek, pretty much, everything south of Dartmouth flows down into the Wyandotte Treatment Plant. Uh, the middle and the lower Rouge, which are two separate, uh, the sanitary portion goes to, to Detroit system.
Okay, so it's...
So really, really, we're, we're in kinda three systems, so we should get three bills, I would imagine, because each, each system would be separate.
And every month we get this bill, then?
Yeah.
So you could say that the twenty-six thousand is for the E-Course Creek sewage disposal? Or the Down River?
To me, that seems a little too light, but...
No, that is, that's correct.
That's Down River.
That area for, for years.
Okay, so that's the Down River one.
And the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand is for the Rouge River sewage disposal?
Well, the Valley.
The what?
There's another piece of the Down River system, and we calculate based on water disposal.
Yes.
Which is roughly about another thirty-five thousand a month.
And that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Seeing no one else?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Horta, second by...
Here.
Councilman Kozinski? Any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye, aye, aye.
Paying attention? You're opposed?
We're all here.
He told me he didn't show...
Anybody?
All favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
I assume he did have it.
I don't know.
Thank you, motion hearing.
I don't know this, no.
He did.